... manager who's not in his normal spot, but we're glad you could be with us, Mr. Shoda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Christopher Pulis.
Present.
Michael Ricchio.
Here.
Victoria Triano.
Here.
John Barry.
Here.
William Deedzick.
Here.
Tom Lombardi.
Here.
Dawn Maselli.
Present.
Kelly Morrissey.
Here.
Christopher Palmieri.
Here.
Okay, I think Councilman Pulis has the prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your direction and guidance. Keep us focused tonight on what is best for Southington and her people. Amen.
Amen. And if I could ask our Fire Chief, Chief Butler, to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So moving on with our agenda, first item is the minutes, so I'm just looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Barry. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardi. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Councilperson communications. Vice Chair Maselli?
Oh, okay, I'll start. So I just want to note that the Chamber of Commerce in Southington, our very active Chamber of Commerce, and the CBIA held a legislative breakfast last week with our Southington delegation, as well as our council chairman, Mr. Palmieri, and our town manager, Mr. Shoda. It was well-attended, and I think it was informative, and I want to thank you both for being there, and I'm happy that all of our Southington delegation was on hand as well. And thank you to the chamber for hosting these types of informative events.
Thank you to the chamber as well. Mr. Ricchio?
Just stuffed my mouth, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Couple things. I just want to say that I had the opportunity, along with Vicki and Tom yesterday, to represent Southington for a little bit of a thank-you party for Senator Markley. It was well-attended by both sides of the aisle from all over the state, and I just wanted to say thank you to Joe for all he's done for all of us here in Southington. Second issue's been a little pet peeve of mine for a while, and I just keep forgetting to bring it up. Mark, a couple of years ago, or two years ago, we voted to put charging stations for automobiles?
Yes, at the library and the municipal center, yep.
Do we pay the electricity?
Yeah, the grants to put them in were from the state, but the town pays the electricity through the electric bill here in this building and at the library.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the intent of those charging stations were if you are visiting the town hall, or you're visiting the library, and you drive an electric car, while you're there, you plug it in, and you can go about your business.
That was, that's one of the reasons why we put them in. There's no stipulations from the state or us on that, but that's the reason we put them in.
So what I'm getting at is, I've noticed, both here at the town hall and at the library, almost every day, anytime that I drive by, at the library, there's a Tesla and I think a Toyota Prius parked there all day. And if you come to the town hall at night, there's a Tesla parked here all the time. I feel that they were put there for good use. So if you go to the library during the day and you have an electric car, you're not charging your car, because the Tesla and the other car, I think it's a Prius, are there all the time. So a little investigating, I believe the Tesla's owned by a doctor at the hospital. I don't know who owns the one that's parked here, it might even be the same person. I think the council should set up some type of, either put a little note on the window, hey, you're abusing the system here, the taxpayers of Southington pay for these, and I think that's a great idea. I think, I think we should have them, and I'm happy to, if we have to pay electricity for people that are really looking at the environment and using an electric car. But for people, if you can't afford electricity and you need to charge it at home, I mean, and you can't charge it at home, then maybe you should trade in your Tesla. I think there's abuse there, and I just want to just, we don't have to talk about tonight if you don't want to, but open it up. I think we should have the police department maybe stop there and put a little note on the window, or, I don't know what the answer is, but I think it's, it's being wildly abused by a small group of individuals, and I don't think that's fair to the rest of the community.
And, and I don't think we have any formal policy, so maybe we can ask the manager to at least come up with some type of policy for the regulations, because I don't know that anyone, I, you know, I hear what you're saying, I don't know that anyone is intentionally abusing it, because I don't think we have a set forth policy, so.
Right, I agree.
So, could I ask the manager to, to look into a policy for us?
I'll review the grant first to see if there's any stipulations on the grant, and then we could talk about a town policy.
And if you don't mind updating the council as a whole, so thank you for bringing that forward.
Well, and especially if it's going for hours and hours, I mean.
Oh, it's hours.
You know, then you need a timeframe, you need some guidelines and timeframes.
That's even like a timer kind of thing, you know?
Exactly.
So a half an hour, an hour, as long as you're in.
Right, we'll use, we'll use Clerk Larkin's trusty yellow timer.
Sure. Whatever we gotta do. The second thing, I want to preface this, I really, this is not, there's no political intent here at all. It's just an observation. The last meeting, the discussion came up, it was not in the, in the Public Works presentation, it came up through Tom Lombardi, is a new process that we're using to seal the roads. I was unaware of it, so I asked Mark to send me a list of the roads that were done with this new process, and I took my time over the last two weeks to drive around, I think I got to all of them. The roads with the new process are spalling some serious stones. First and foremost, I want to make sure that we're gonna sweep those, because it's as bad as the chip seal process when you first put it down. Secondly, and this is the non-political part here, from what I can see, in my own observations and having been involved with the whole chip seal thing for a long time, this is not a better thing, and I'm not saying that there's not a better process out there than chip seal, but it costs more money, and it's, right now, we're in the middle of winter, the roads are in worse condition. The chip seal, I said it last week, I bought a, I bought a house in town on a road that was chip sealed two years ago, and the road is in perfect condition, it's beautiful. I asked the neighbors, they said, Mike, it sucked when they first put it down, but the road is gorgeous. It's flat, it's smooth, there's no stones, there's no nothing. So why am I saying this? Because I think it's incumbent upon us as leaders that there's a process that's less, that may cause some inconvenience, but it gets our roads maintained, because that's what we're here to do. Do the best that we can for the best amount of money that we can. And we need to stand up as leaders, whether you're Republican or Democrat, and tell the people of this community, there is no perfect solution with road maintenance. It does not exist. I've never seen any road project where you're not inconvenienced in some way, whether traffic control, or pothole repair, or asphalt paving, I don't care what it is. If someone on the council is telling people of the community that we're gonna give you perfect road maintenance with no stones and no nothing, then we're not telling the truth. Chip seal's the best, or some other product is the best, then that's the best. If this is the best solution, this new product that we just tried, which I don't believe it is, that's the best, then that's the best. But all types of road maintenance, if we're gonna maintain our roads, is gonna have some form of nuisance. And in the chip seal, I wasn't here when that got, got voted on, but in the chip seal process, or this process that's out here now, yeah, it's really bad. It's no worse than when we sanded our roads, and people used to complain in the spring you'd have to go out and sweep your driveway. That's road maintenance, folks, and I think as a community, if we're gonna get our biggest bang for the buck, then we need to stand up here, like the big boys, and tell the people that you're gonna have a mess in your roads for a little while, deal with it. Deal with it. Thank you.
So just, just to that point, I, I know for sure one road in particular, Michael Drive, that I've been in touch with the manager and Annette multiple times, and that, through Annette, it's more an issue with the contractor in that case. Now, the contractor happens to be the same contractor that did the chip seal process, so that could be part of it, but I can tell you specifically for that road, which is the one road that I did address previously, they're, they are withholding payment, because the contractor needs to come back, back out and look at the quality of the work they did. So, we are addressing it, I know they're on it, but I think it's good to hear another point of view on that as well.
All the roads, though, because I went and looked, I think I saw all of them on the list, they all need to be swept, without question. They're all spalling, the, the stones are everywhere. So, Michael Drive's bad, but Heather Lane is bad, there's one off, up over near Delahoney Drive off Carter Lane, that one's all spalling. I mean, they're all, they're all spewing off rocks, so somewhat, you know, the town's gotta, we gotta address it.
If I may ask you, as I said at the Public Works Committee meeting a couple of meetings ago, I said, you know, we're in the middle of winter right now, the contractor has taken responsibility, and is it the best situation? No. So the contractor's gonna take a look at it. We meet bi-weekly, my staff and I, and we go over what, what the process we're gonna do for the next roads in, in March, we're gonna be giving our presentation on what roads to the Public Works Committee, and what type of process we're gonna use. So, I just ask you to be a little bit patient. The contractor, as well as the town, have gone out there and they swept a couple of the areas. One is right near my road, Virgin Road, I think is what you're talking about, Virgin Road, Christine Drive. My road was done one way, and this is, this was done the other way, so I'm able to monitor both of those. The chairman is absolutely right, Michael Drive is probably the worst of, of that, and it's always, and it's mainly in the intersections where the cars turn faster, so all of you are right. The question becomes now is that, we'll look at it again in the spring, and we'll discuss it more thoroughly at the Public Works Committee, when Annette and Keith give their presentation on the roads they, that they're gonna recommend doing in the process at the March meeting.
Right, it's an ongoing conversation at Public Works, and we have talked about our dissatisfaction to Public Works staff, so it's ongoing in this community in terms of, what are we gonna do? None of it's great.
Right.
None of it's great.
I agree, I agree. Last thing, I know I've taken a lot of time already, on, on the roads, Mark, I think it's because you had such a really cold winter, but the potholes are, like, atrocious. And I called Annette, there was one on Wooder Street that you're literally gonna lose a rim, and I know, I think they might've gotten that one, but they're everywhere, so.
Yeah.
I don't think we can wait till spring.
That was our, that was actually at our Public Works staff meeting today. We're putting crews on that, we're hoping that we don't get the snow on Wednesday, so we can continue to work on the potholes, but my phone is lit up, along with, the Highway Department's phone is lit up, telling us about potholes, so we're moving as quickly as we, as we get the notice.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I want to thank the town staff. The pothole issue, obviously, it's every year with the cold weather, then it's warm, then it's cold, then we have snow, then we have ice, then we have rain, so certainly the town staff is, is out daily fixing the potholes as they are made aware of them. So I want to thank the town staff and appreciate the patience of town residents for understanding of the situation, so I want to thank everything else. In terms of the whole process of how we go about roads, my colleague is correct, there's no perfect solution, and some solutions are, are looked upon more favorably than others. I do know, as a member of the council for a long time, the amount of communication I received about chip seal was pretty strong, one of the top issues that I got communications on. And one of the issues that struck, just struck with, stuck with me was when I received an email from a parent whose child loved riding their bike, and I remember when I was a kid, I loved riding my bike, too. And the chip seal process was so difficult for young kids in neighborhoods when they're out riding their bike, because the stones were everywhere, and if a kid wiped out, it didn't help the situation with that particular road process. So, I think in some areas of town, that process might be better than other areas of town, so I think the town staff are experts in the, in the field, are doing everything they can to come up with a solution of what's the best way to go about addressing the problems with roads in town. So, it's an ongoing discussion, I know members of the Public Works Committee are working hard to try to come up with a solution. We tried a different process, I think none of us were happy with some of the results in some of the, some of the streets, so it's an ongoing discussion, and like the town manager said, we'll, we'll figure it out and hopefully come to a consensus that everyone can live with.
Okay, any?
Yeah, if I might, Mr. Chairman, this week we lost two incredible women in our community, and I'm, I'm gonna just take a moment to remember them before this body. The first one is Toni Mazacaro. Mrs. Mazacaro, if you lived in Southington for more than 25 or 30 years, you will remember Mrs. Mazacaro, she worked in Rayfields, and then she worked in Levis', and she was part of the fabric of this community. She knew everybody in town, and she was very close to her family, and I bring her up because she never ran for office, she never invented something amazing, she loved her family and this town, and lived to be 103, and lived on her own up until a couple of weeks before she passed. And so I just want to bring her name up, most of us do remember Toni, and amazing woman that she was, and, and that the memories are still very, very strong. The other person I want to remember today, Mr. Chairman and Council, is Asuncion or Sue Lopez Gomez. Mrs. Gomez is Tom's grandmother, Tom Lombardi's grandmother, and when you read her story, it gives you chills, because Mrs. Gomez came to this country in the midst of the Cuban Revolution in 1959, with nothing, except the dream to make a life for her children. She brought her children to this country, she raised them, and she was a woman who lived to 91, I believe, she was 91 when she finally passed, but she was a woman of faith, she was a woman for family, and she loved this country. And when I went to her wake, I was so impressed by a small table that was set up, and there on that table was her citizenship papers that she treasured to be a, a citizen of the United States of America. Two heroes within our community, who didn't go through all of the, you know, the newspaper stories, or the television press, or whatever, they just did their job so beautifully, and I didn't want their passings, either one of them, to pass without mentioning them here tonight. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And, thank you, Councilman Triano, for those kind words. I, I know my grandmother would be very proud to, to hear them, and she loved this community. And without talking about her whole life and everything that she did, I just wanted to take a moment to point out the community of Southington and how much she loved living here, and, you know, after she was done raising my brother and I as, as youngsters, she really found great comfort and friendship at the Calendar House. She, she went there regularly, and between the Calendar House and the YMCA. So the reason I say this is for our, our elderly, or I, I don't even think elderly is the right word, but our over 55 population, I guess you can say, if, you know, my grandmother didn't have many friends, so if, if you're in that group of people, I urge you to go out in this community and take advantage of the resources that we have here, because it really could be life-changing, because you take someone like my grandmother, if she didn't have the YMCA and the Calendar House, you know, she would've been home doing, she wouldn't have got, got out of the house. So, take advantage of what this community has to offer for those people. So, again, thank you for the kind words, and I know she'd be proud to hear those, those words, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilperson communication?
Yeah, actually, I do, Mr. Chairman. What, one of the, when you became chairman, Mr. Palmieri, is you brought in a lot of department heads to talk about their department, to talk about what's going on in, in the different departments here in Southington, and I think that's been received very positively, and I think it's, it's been good for the council, and it's been also good for the public. But one of the issues that we, it's not really under our jurisdiction, but it's, it's an important part of the fabric of our community, is the Southington Housing Authority, and I'd like, I know we have an issue that we're gonna be scheduling for a public hearing tonight, who talks about the Community Block Grant, but what I would like to have them come, the director and whoever he thinks is important, to give a presentation about the Southington Housing Authority, because I went on their website, and one of the issues is the, the lack of opportunities for seniors that are on fixed incomes to find adequate housing, affordable housing. And on the Southington Housing Authority website, it says, "Due to the large number of applicants on our waiting list, the Southington Housing Authority will not accept applications in January of 2019." It says, "Please check with us in June of 2019 concerning the July 2019 application period." So, what I'm afraid of is their waiting list is very long, but it's not really reflective of how many people really are waiting for housing. So I think I have an in-depth presentation by the Southington Housing Authority to the council for the entire town, to talk about what options are available, how can we expand possible housing for residents that are on very fixed incomes? So, I don't know if you can reach out to the director and, and see, and coordinate a good time that would be appropriate, I don't, I hope there's no objections to it.
No, not at all, because, you know, you bring up something that happened with me that, just this week, someone came to me and looking for a place for her mother-in-law, and I referred, not realizing, but I referred them to the Housing Authority, and they were told that they wouldn't even take an application. And so what happens is now there's a big backlog of applications, so it is cer, it is challenging. They have assured this person that there is a book for many communities that may have openings or whatever, but I, I'm looking forward to seeing Al here and giving him an opportunity to discuss this and, and talk about it, and see what we can do to undergird this here in Southington. My understanding is that there's a two-year wait to get an apartment here.
And we don't even know if it's a two-year wait, it might even be longer, because they're not even taking names on the waiting list.
I would very much like to.
Yeah, I think it's important, what people don't realize is, like my colleague just mentioned, people that live in Southington, they want to stay in Southington, and to offer them a housing in Waterbury or Meriden is just not, I think, a viable option, and I think we have to maybe look at what we can do as a community. There are many federal and state grants out there to help with housing on this type of level, so I hope you can coordinate something.
Sure.
Thank you.
We, we have a presentation set up for the next meeting, but I'll ask the manager to have the second meeting in March.
Second meeting in March.
Whatever's good for them, yep.
That'll be, that'll be the public hearing that you're scheduling tonight, and you can do the public hearing and do the brief synopsis at the same time.
That would be great. Okay. Any other councilperson communications? Mr. Lombardi?
Councilwoman Triano or Councilwoman Maselli, maybe the Rotary event, I, I know it's next week.
March 2nd. March 2nd, no, no, not March 2nd.
March 5th.
Hold on.
It's next Tuesday. Yes, it's next Tuesday. So Tuesday, that's 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th.
5th.
Yep.
Tuesday, 6:30, Tavern 42, Mardi Gras.
Mardi Gras.
Your ticket supports the Memorial Park playscape.
Yes, it's gonna be exciting.
So, we should all be there as well.
Good food, good, everything. If you need a ticket, let me know.
Mr. Manager, we'll, we'll wheel you in, I think that's your surgery date, though.
Perfect.
No, it's this Wednesday.
No, my surgery date is this Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
He'll be up.
Then you should be wheeled in, please.
Oh, boy. Any other councilperson communications?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just three quick announcements from the Historical Society. We're now on winter hours through April 2019, that's Saturday's 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM. Tomorrow night, February 26th, at 6:30, is Connecticut 169 Club. It's a book I mentioned at the last meeting that features each of the towns in the state of Connecticut. Phil Wooding was the contributor from Southington, the author of that book will be there, offering a presentation and a book signing. It's a great guide, the book, talking about different historical places in our town, things you can do, so if you're free tomorrow night and interested, I encourage you to attend, no charge. And then there, they continue to offer free appraisals at the Historical Society of items that you might have in your possession. They're free appraisals, and that's Saturday, March 9th, and then the 23rd, noon to 3:00 are the next two days that they offer those free appraisals.
Okay. Any other councilperson communications? I, I just have two items. The first is related to STEPS, and I'd like to, first of all, acknowledge and thank one of our own council members, Councilman Deedzick. Councilman Deedzick has been instrumental, you may or may not know that STEPS, our youth council, has come up with liquor stickers, which is a way to prevent underage youth from getting access to alcohol that's open in a cabinet in, in people's homes. It's been so successful that we're actually trying to patent it. So with that, we need some legal advice, and Councilman Deedzick has really gone above and beyond, and dedicated quite a few hours of his own time, including attending a seminar at UConn Law to work with STEPS to add language for a patent to protect the design for the liquor stickers, so I just want to acknowledge and thank you for all your work with that.
Thank you, Chris. I did the easy work, though, they came up with the idea, so.
But we appreciate, very much appreciated.
That's awesome. I didn't know that.
Bill?
Yeah.
Thank you, that's awesome.
And, and the other thing I'd like to acknowledge and thank is Jack from HQ Dumpsters. We, as we have Deputy Chief Palmieri here, we know we have a partnership with the Southington Police Department, which is our medication drop box, which is located in the lobby of the police department. Well, we're trying to get that word out, we're all aware, hopefully, about that, but Jack at HQ has stepped up and has advertisement currently on one of his trucks that was unveiled on Saturday, advertising the drop box at the police station, we appreciate that, and I understand we're in the, in the works for getting a second truck out on the road as well. So I'd just like to acknowledge and thank Jack, we appreciate it, and again, the unveiling was Saturday, so you'll be seeing those out on the road, just extra advertisement, and we, we truly appreciate that. So thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I saw the social media posts from the event Saturday, Megan Albanese, I saw your beautiful family, you know, you guys were in the frame, and I, I was hopeful that maybe my, my son would come and do that with me, but he's 17 and he declined, so probably wouldn't fit in the frame, he's 6'4", you know.
Mr. Chairman, were you?
So thank you, Bill and Jack, we appreciate it.
Were you going to bring up Erica's letter?
Um, I'll let you, I have one more thing, and then if you want, you can, I'll, that's...
Because I said that we probably would.
Okay. The other thing I just wanted to share, and Vice Chair Maselli mentioned this earlier, that we had the chamber event last week, and that was really to talk about the impact of the governor's budget on the state of Connecticut, so I want to share publicly with all of you the impact right now, as it impacts Southington. So we're very fortunate for education funding, we, as it's proposed, will receive an increase of $65,548 for general education funding to the town of Southington, so that's a positive. Unfortunately, with capital in projects and improvements, the governor's budget decreases that by $47,150, so again, that's negative, unfortunately. And then the big hit, which you've probably been hearing about statewide, is the contribution municipalities are gonna have to pay for teachers' retirement, so that, the impact specifically to Southington for next year in the governor's budget as it stands right now, and it already did change once, so I will say as it stands right now, is a cost to the town, an additional cost to the town of $270,241. So overall, we are, we are short $251,843 from where we were last year with state funding, so that is addressed in the manager's budget that was presented, but I just wanted to share publicly how the state, the governor's proposed budget does impact us directly in Southington. Additional that is not included in this, there's this, there's been a change in the formula for how MERS, for Municipal Employees Retirement, is calculated, and that is an additional cost to Southington of approximately $600,000, and to the Board of Ed of approximately $400,000?
About $350, and then there's the smaller ones, the sewer fund and the police extra duty.
Okay, so approximately $400,000 additional besides the $600,000 to the town. So those are just some of the impact to the governor's budget. Now, we're very fortunate, because if you look at the impact on other communities, it was, they were actually hit harder than Southington was, but I do want to be public and share exactly what the impact is for our community, so I hope that's helpful. Mr. Ricchio?
Thank you for doing that, because there's been a lot of questions. The one thing I think is important to note is that the taxpayers of Southington, and any, any town in the state of Connecticut, really, their, their ability to pay the absorption that we have to take as, in our town budget, is also going to be impacted by their ability to absorb all of the taxes that are being proposed from the governor's office, whether or not those all get passed or not, but tolls and everything else, they're gonna be taxed on things they've never had to pay taxes on before. So their ability to pay their local taxes will be impacted by that, it's important to make sure that we have that discussion as well when we look at our own budget.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Lombardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for, for laying that out, for, for the residents. I think it's also worth noting that the teachers' retirement payment for Southington, a year from now, jumps from $270,000 this year, up to $530,000 approximately next year, so just shy of a 50% increase there, or just shy of... So just shy of a 50% increase there, or just shy of doubling, I should say. So, you know, these are, these are big numbers that we're looking at here. So, it's over a million dollars of additional costs to the town between the MERS and what you, what you outlined. So, you know, residents are struggling, and we'll see what comes in the next few weeks with the budget process.
Right.
Thank you again for summarizing that.
Absolutely. And finally, I just, and there will be certainly much more to come, but I want to acknowledge and thank our town manager. The town manager released his budget. Not only do I want to thank the town manager, but all their department heads really did a phenomenal job. In fact, the reason the budget is, I think, 2.4% increase?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
And the reason it's a 2.4% increase is because that includes the $600,000, which is really mandated from the state that I already mentioned. So without that, the increase would be even less than that. So I really want to thank the town manager and all our department heads for really doing a fine job sharpening their pencils, taking out their erasers, and making the changes necessary to stay within the guidelines set forth by the Board of Finance. So, great job, Mr. Manager. Thank you.
On behalf of the department heads, you're welcome.
Okay. Ms. Triano?
Yeah, thank you so much, and I do agree with the town, for the town manager. Great job. Erica Byrne is the head of Women for Progress, and she wrote to us this past week or so. And she also put her letter in all of the major newspapers. So I, I believe it was in The Observer and...
I think on Saturday I saw it.
Yeah.
And, I'm sorry, The Record Journal, Saturday.
The Record Journal. I'm not sure if it was in The Observer or not, but she spoke about how the fact that the press was not included in their presentation was seen as a way to encourage people to speak. And she wrote this lovely letter. We're very late. I'm not going to read the whole letter, but, Mr. Chairman, I would like very much for that letter to be put in to our minutes tonight. If it's all right, Mark, I don't, I don't have Kathy's email, but I'm going to email it to Mark. And Mark, if Laura could just get it over to Kathy. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Any other councilmen communications? All right, so we're moving on now to report of special committees. We have several this evening. First, we'll start with the Apple Harvest Festival Committee. So plans are well underway for the 51st Apple Harvest Festival. A couple of things to share. First of all, with our sponsorship, I'm pleased to say we already have two confirmed sponsors and one in-kind sponsor, so three total. So Melissa Kokoza is doing a great job, and again, we already have a couple lined up. At our last meeting, which was held February 13th, we approved both our tent and our electrical proposals for this year. I'd like to thank both our companies for coming back and maintaining the price as we had for last year for the 50th Anniversary Festival. They did maintain that price, so we're able to at least get some direction for moving forward for the 51st. So those were both approved. We are now looking for anyone to submit proposals for refuse and recycling, and if, if anyone knows anyone in the field, please, please share, I heard my voice, Mr. ... Please share with them that we are looking for proposals, so they can submit that. The information's available on the town website if you're interested in putting in a proposal for that. I'm also pleased to announce we have confirmed and already have our craft fair application set that is now available online, and we are working on finalizing our booth application. That should be finalized by the end of this week, if not the beginning of next week. So that should be available for our vendors very soon. Any questions about the festival? Okay. Next committee is the Sewer Committee. Chairman Zoney reached out to me. He couldn't be here this evening. He apologized, but he said there is really nothing to report. So with that, we'll move on to Item C, which is the Self-Insurance Committee. I'll turn it over to Councilman Paulus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Self-Insurance Committee met on February 21st, and I have two items to report. As of the January numbers, the town is currently $153,000 under budget for the year on claims. Our consultant informed the committee that there's nothing alarming about this from a claim perspective standpoint at this time. The second item I wanted to report on was after an extensive executive session, we came out and unanimously voted to recommend to the town that we stay with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield as our insurance provider. This comes after an extensive RFP process, a review of proposals, thoughtful discussion. And forthcoming, a more detailed summary of the details of the RFP process will be drafted by the committee and submitted to the council. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to Item D is the Ordinance Committee. We have our Chair of the Ordinance Committee, former Councilwoman Cheryl Lounsbury, and she'll give a report.
Well, thank you and good evening. The Ordinance Committee is bringing to you tonight a draft ordinance that we'd like you to review and hopefully recommend. It was unanimously brought to you unanimously from the committee. It's an ordinance regarding the sale of tobacco, vaping, and nicotine products. And research tells us, and you'll see in the report, that 95% of adults say they start smoking before the age of 21. And from what I hear from friends in the school system is that while tobacco and smoking is an issue, vaping is even becoming more of an issue. And so we really want to get a hold of that. You'll notice if you, I'm sure you've been watching the news, and Southington is not the only town that is doing this. There are a number of towns doing this. And, but I do have to say that Southington did spend a lot of time researching this. And I want to thank Carolyn. We've got, we worked with the police department, we worked with STEPS, we worked with the Regional Health Association. We even, well, I didn't, but the committee that really researched it worked even with the National Association. So there was a lot of thought going into this. Basically, what the, what the ordinance does is it asks retailers to sign up once a year for a certificate or to be able to sell tobacco products. And with, and they'll have to renew that every year, and that's going to allow the police department then to know who is actually selling. They'll also be required to post a sign in their, very prominently in their establishment saying that tobacco, vaping products, and nicotine products cannot be sold to anyone under 21 years of age. There will be unannounced random checks by the police department. We're taking it very seriously. There will be unannounced random checks, and there will be consequences if the check, if people are found actually providing these products to people under 21 years. It will start with a seven-day suspension with two warnings. A month's suspension with three warnings. With four warnings, licenses can be revoked, and that will be really kind of determined by the police department. There also will be an appeal process. This is America after all, so there is always an appeal process written into that. And there's an education process that will be going on between STEPS, the police department, and our regional health district. So I think it's pretty, pretty well thought out. We've tried not to burden our small businesses by, you know, issuing a fee for this, for this permit, but really encouraging them to follow and then having consequences that will cost them significant business if they don't, if they choose not to follow the ordinance. So I'm here, STEPS is here, the police department is here. If anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
And if I can, if I can just add to that, first of all, I want to thank you for moving this forward for us on the agenda we had, we had our meeting last week. Just a couple of other thanks, especially thanks to Deputy Chief Palmieri for working with this. When this was originally proposed, if you're not aware, the city of Hartford has already passed an ordinance themselves. So I'd like to thank the Hartford Council, because I did reach out to them, and they shared that language, which then Deputy Chief worked into, you know, personalized it for Southington. So, thank you to them. Shane Lockwood has been great, which is through the Health Department to work with. And Kelly Lepard and Megan Albanese from STEPS, thank you for your work as well. Cheryl, you mentioned, and I want to publicly thank, her name is Shannon Quimby. She's from Tobacco 21, which is based out of Washington, DC. She's the Eastern Regional Director. And then in addition to that, we also had help from Kevin O'Flaherty, who's from Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids, and he's the Regional Advocacy Director for the Eastern Region. He's based here in Connecticut. So we were fortunate at that meeting, as you mentioned, Shannon actually came up from Washington, DC to attend the meeting with us. And you may or may not also be aware that the governor actually is proposing similar language. Now, certainly, that may, that may have some sticking points that our ordinance wouldn't, wouldn't have, but the governor is also proposing a similar, similar language himself. So it could become a moot point as a state issue, but we, of course, are trying to be in the forefront in Southington and, and pass this forward. So the next steps tonight, and it is on for action, would be to set a public hearing, which I'd suggest maybe two weeks from tonight at our first meeting in March, and then we can go from there.
And I'd just like to say what I liked about that, even with all of this research, and so often it happens on the state and national level, you pass something and it's kind of, it has to be for everyone. We talked to people from the National Association, we talked to people from larger groups, and we were able to tailor their language to what makes sense in Southington. So, you know, I think that's the best of government, where, where towns can work and tailor language with what works for the town, but using the research and the thoughts of the state and the national. So, very pleased with this ordinance. I hope you, you read it, and if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact any one of us.
Great. The other thing, too, that Cheryl mentioned is, it is, I had reached out to the superintendent to ask for statistics to share. So last year at the high school, there were 61 vaping-related issues. That's the last school year, the whole school year. This year, there were 23 so far vaping-related issues. And unfortunately, at the middle school level, last year there were a total of 19. This is vaping incidents in school. 19 at the middle school level, and this year we already have 14, and we're just about halfway through the school year. So it is becoming more of an issue. Obviously, some high school seniors are 18, hence it's easier to get in the hands of our kids. So this would really be a step in the right direction for us.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just some comments. First, I just, I want to thank the Ordinance Committee for, and STEPS, and everyone involved, Carolyn, thank you, for tackling this issue. I, once again, I think it's awesome of our community to take a step forward in this direction. I feel like, and I've heard reports and read articles with regard to the American Cancer Society and how society has almost taken a step back with regard to the number of smokers because of vaping and these trendy, you know, this popularity of these vaping products and whatnot. I, too, work for a school system outside of this community, and, you know, it's a trend with our young people, and it's scary, and there are long-term repercussions that I don't even think we're aware of yet because it is so new. And I'm just pleased that, you know, that we're all doing something about it and trying to be somewhat proactive. I'm intrigued by the process for our local retailers to declare product sales of these kind, that they will, we don't have, I guess we don't have that information right now, the police department? I think, did I mishear that, Cheryl?
So we'll have to take out a license so that we will then...
So we'll have that information on hand, which, again, all, all a positive. All a positive, so.
The other thing that's important to mention is because of the impact on our businesses, we decided to not put a fee in, and that was discussed at the Ordinance Committee. There, at the national level, they actually suggested putting a fee in, and through discussion, we decided we are not going to do a fee. We care more about them partaking in the program and then, than charging. The fee is based really for enforcement, and again, we've got such a great partnership with our police department and STEPS that we don't necessarily need to worry about a fee for enforcement of this because it's already being done with alcohol and tobacco-type products, so we wouldn't have to worry about collecting a fee. It would just be the requirement to get that license each year.
I definitely wrote that down. No cost for permit.
That's correct.
Another positive.
That's correct.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you, everyone involved. Thank you of my former colleagues, Cheryl Lounsbury, for, for bringing it forward, and thank you, Chris, and everyone that's part of the committee. One of the issues that is a little bit of concern to me, certainly what the industry is doing to try to entice young people, certain flavors, making it kind of cool. It's almost like, what are, what are these private businesses trying to do to our youth? So I think it's good that we're going down this, down this road with regulation in terms of this issue. The concern I have is how do we address the issue of internet sales? I mean, a lot of young people today, it's the Amazon world. They can just go on their computer and order stuff. Is there any provision that we have as a community to address online sales of these type of products? Does anyone know that answer? Is that something we could address?
Yes, I, do you... Do you want, you want to come to the microphone? Just come to the... Kelly?
Yeah, one, one of the issues, too, obviously, yeah.
Kelly Lepard speaking.
Sure. Chris talked about the whole issue of the governor's proposals, and maybe there'll be something in regulation that could curb this, but I don't think a lot of young people are going into the local extramart and buying these products, they're buying them online. And I just want to make sure that we can address the online issue that, that is happening.
Kelly, I'll let you speak first, and then I can also share with you, this came from Washington, DC as well, but go ahead.
Sure. There was just an email out from the state today that there are two bills currently up, and one has to do with prohibiting flavors, so they wouldn't be able to sell in the state except mint and menthol. And also, there is another one having to do with online sales. I'm just trying to find it right here. So the state is working on it. That would be more of at the state level versus the local level, but there are multiple bills up right now, so.
So, so in addition, two points, Councilman Barry. First of all, our original language, and this has evolved through STEPS before it came to the Ordinance Committee, we originally had purchase and possession in the original ordinance language, and they actually convinced us to take out the possession for the exact reason that you mentioned, is that these marketing companies are literally marketing to underage kids to sell their products. So they're, they're being victimized. So in agreement, we then decided to take out the possession language and just go after the people selling it to them. Second, instead of in-person purchases, they will go online. I have four responses to that, and this, again, comes from the national organization, Tobacco 21. According to the 2017 Connecticut Youth Tobacco Survey, 59.3% of youth surveyed reported they obtained their tobacco and nicotine products from a friend, while 34.7% said they purchased them from a vape shop, gas station, or convenience store. So the vast majority are actually not purchased online. Because over 80% of high school seniors are 18 or older before they graduate, younger teens have easy access to nicotine and tobacco products through high school friends, which I mentioned earlier. While it is possible to purchase some e-cigarette brands online, several e-cigarette makers have voluntarily begun enacting stricter age verification processes in response to the recent youth vaping epidemic. So that's, again, a national statistic. And then finally, the Prevent All Cigarette Trafficking Act of 2009 requires age verification of the person to whom tobacco products are delivered at a residence and gives the Federal Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives authority to inspect records and inventories of all internet tobacco sellers to make certain those sellers comply with the regulations. So violations of any provision of the Pact Act are a felony. So again, we're very fortunate to have a partnership with a national organization that can certainly speak to this nationwide, because to your point, if it's through the internet, it doesn't necessarily mean it's happening in Connecticut. So I hope that helps.
Yeah, no, appreciate that, and obviously, the committee's on top of it, and I appreciate it very much. I think it's a great issue that we're going to have a public hearing on it and get public awareness about the dangers that these type of products, you know, do to our youth. Just help me understand, obviously, tobacco and nicotine products are highly regulated in our schools. Is vaping also considered a tobacco and nicotine product?
Vaping products are, yes.
Yeah, all, so they're under the same umbrella?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's good to know.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask a question later, but I'll ask it now. So how does a municipality have jurisdiction to make a state or federal law more stringent? And if it's under, I'll direct it to the downtown area.
Yeah, definitely.
Under the police powers, because just because Hartford passed an ordinance doesn't make me comfortable. So my question would be, is there any authority saying, you know, a municipality... So my question would be, is there any authority saying, you know, a municipality can pass more stringent legislation for something like alcohol, tobacco, firearms, anything like that? I'm just going to put the question out, I don't know the answer.
So Hartford Legal Counsel did weigh in before they did it, and then I deferred to the town attorney before we did anything, so I'll let her answer. But also, many municipalities now are actually pursuing doing something similar. But I'll defer to the town attorney.
No, I had the same concern when this was brought to my attention. Generally, municipalities have the power to regulate issues that affect health, safety, and welfare. We put that provision, the exact statutory reference on page two of the proposed ordinance, it's very long, 7-148, et cetera, et cetera. There's no specific statute that says towns specifically have the authority to make a more stringent regulation than the state, but I would submit it would fall under that 7-148.
So then, do you think under 7-148, we could go a step further and you could actually make it some sort of illegal for someone under 21 to possibly smoke alcohol in the town of Southington?
Yes.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I agree with John. The public hearing, I think, would be very important on this issue. I think that we need to make sure that everyone in town knows that there's going to be a public hearing. I'm hoping the press will pick it up, and anybody watching the meeting will take note of that. And if there's any concerns, if there's any questions, we want to hear about it. We don't want to move forward if there is any doubt or any concern that maybe we haven't addressed. And so I think the public hearing is crucial in this matter.
Great. And as I mentioned, that is set on the agenda later on tonight, to set a public hearing. So, sure.
One of the things that the Ordinance Committee did look at is, do we make it punishable to somebody to possess? And we decided not to do that because children are children, and they make mistakes. They make bad decisions. And you don't want to, you know, it's up to the parents and the school, and God knows who else these days, to really guide them. But you don't want to put them in a situation where, when a child makes a bad decision, which all of our children have at one time or another, and probably all of us have at one time or another when we were that age, we put them in a position where the consequences for them is really more stringent than needs to be, and it follows them through life. So, you know, this is a good ordinance, I really do believe that, and people really kind of want to get on it and make it even better, but I think we've got to kind of look at both sides of the argument. And that's why we chose to really hold the vendors accountable rather than the children. Not that their parents won't get involved, hopefully they will. Not that STEPS and everyone won't be educating the children, hopefully they will. But we also don't want to punish someone for being an adolescent.
Any other questions for Cheryl? Okay, thank you very much, and again, that's on for action later in the agenda. So finally, is our Tax Relief Committee. Chairman Bozquinn will be here tonight. I think he'll be coming to one of the meetings in March, either next meeting or the second meeting in March. But I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Morrissey, just to give an overview in the meantime.
We did meet last week. We're discussing implementing a new statute in Southington, which would allow some additional relief based on income limits and a amount that we at the council here would elect to implement, and that would be a recommendation from the Tax Relief Committee. So we're working on putting that together to present to this council.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for Councilwoman Morrissey? All right, moving on to the Town Manager's report and communications. So, Mr. Manager, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item I have is the Board of Finance minutes. We had a very brief meeting prior to the Board of Education's presentation. The only major thing that took place was that we established a capital fund for Jude Lane, and that was the project you guys already approved. So that was the only major thing going on at the Board of Finance. Any questions on that? The second item I have is something you're aware of, this is part of this year's budget, which is to buy a pumper for the fire department. They've worked very diligently on their committee to find the pumper that would serve Southington best. We went out to bid, there were two individual companies that bid, the committee worked with both of them, and they're recommending to you tonight. The company is U.S. Tanker, and the amount is $477,155, which is within our budget. I want to thank obviously the fire department and their subcommittee, and we had a consultant, Jay Lyons Fire Consultants, and they did a nice job on it too. If there's any questions, obviously, we have so many chiefs here tonight, you can pick anyone out you want. No questions on that. The next one, I'd like to ask all three of the chiefs to come up, please. Union negotiations are never easy. They're sometimes a little bit hot, but I got to tell you, in this particular case, working with my office, first of all, on the administration side, Chief Paul and Chief Butler, excellent job, I worked with them very closely. Believe it or not, we didn't use a lot of labor layers in this particular negotiations. Chief Dubey is President of the Fire Union, and he was a gentleman through the whole process. I believe we came to a conclusion that we think we're all very pleased with. The overall, you'll see a lot of management right changes in there, which was worked out between Chief Butler and the union. I usually don't get involved in a lot of the managers' rights part of it, but in this particular case, because a lot of them had to do with some stuff, I was very interested financially, I did get involved in that part of it. But to sum it up, it's a 6.8% contract over a three-year period. They have agreed to move the medical, which is also quite important, in the direction that we chose. It is a three-year contract. Unfortunately, it's retroactive back to July 1, so therefore, it's really a two-and-a-half year contract, or less than two-and-a-half year contract. But first of all, I'd like to thank them, and certainly we'll be answering any questions you have, but I believe this is something that certainly both the administration and the union could be proud of, the negotiations and the products you have in front of you tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Lembert.
I have a procedural question for the town manager and the chiefs. How does this contract work? Does it go to the Board of Fire Commissioners first? Do they have to approve it, or does it just come to us?
They're aware of what it is, but union contract negotiations are handled through the town manager because it's all financial. Any of the structural changes to the organization, we go to the fire commission to make sure they're aware of what it is, and there is no disagreement on the direction we're heading.
And usually, there's a member of the, sorry, there's a member of the fire commission on the negotiating team also.
Yeah, thank you.
So I just, if you gentlemen wanted to say anything, now would be the time to do it.
I can say, in the course of my career in the fire service, I've been involved in negotiating many union contracts from the management side. And I would like to say that it was absolutely a pleasure in this particular case. There was no animosity on either side. Working with the town manager, he gave me the leeway to make some changes to the contract, worked with the union. I think overall, this has probably been one of the best negotiations that I've been involved in. It's worked well, it's worked very seamlessly, and I think in the long run, it serves management and it serves labor equally here. And when you can come to an agreement on all sides, I think that's a win. So I'd like to thank the council for the consideration tonight, and I think this is probably the best contract that we could have worked out.
Chief Dubey, anything you want to say?
The local membership places a very high value, degree of value on a labor management, positive labor manager relationship, and we have an outstanding relationship with the department administration, the fire commissioners, and the town manager. We did work for the better part of a year on this agreement. It's a very fair agreement for all sides, and it allows the department, as we continue to evolve and move forward, continue to provide a very high degree of service to the townspeople in order to pass through it. I appreciate your consideration tonight. I did ratify at the local level unanimously two weeks ago, and I believe this is a very positive moment for our relationship.
Thank you, Chiefs.
I do have one more question. As I was reading this last night, and I know we've all been hearing news stories on issues like this over the last year or two, on the first page, it says "Union Dues." It says, "Remove the references to service fees, union membership is now voluntary."
I'll have to answer that question. That is a legal provision we're required to put in, and obviously, Chief Dubey knows the, because of the Supreme Court case, the town cannot force anyone to pay union dues. So we put that clause in there. It used to say that the member of the, the old contract said, "The member of the union must pay a percentage to the town of Southington, we issue checks back to the union." That can't say that anymore. So to be specific, I don't believe anybody in the union has left the union, and I don't foresee that happening, but we have to put that language in there so someone could come out.
So can...
The United States Supreme Court, correct.
So can somebody be a firefighter in Southington and not be in the union?
The Janus decision allows them that opportunity at this point. None of our members have opted out, but as the manager said, that was a pro forma language change to comply with Janus case.
Thank you, Chiefs, very much.
I just want to thank the, all of the negotiating that has gone on for the past year on this, and I want to make sure, Chief Dubey, that you mention it to the members, that we appreciate them, and the other chiefs, Chief Butler, and Chief Earl, and the town manager, of course, that it was a lot of work.
Who's not a chief, but...
But we really do appreciate the spirit of camaraderie and that we're a community, and we thank you for that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
The next item I have is some good news. I want to thank two people, obviously, Amelia from our finance division and our bond counsel's office. They came up with a possibility for the town, which I wholeheartedly recommend, is that our two bond ordinances, the first one on January 22, 2010, and another one on March 1, 2011, could be refunding bonds, which that means is that we were able to take those bonds, refund, and then get a lower interest rate. I want to explain how that is. The resolution you see in front of you allows the town to do up to $7.5 million of those bonds. The calculations of our savings will be around $410,000 over the next 12 years. So if you average that out, it's about $38,000 a year that we'll be saving from that. Really is something that happens occasionally. Some of the people have been on the council for a few years, we've done this a couple of times, but it's every once in a while, we have the opportunity based upon how the market runs, and this is something I wholeheartedly recommend, answer any questions that you may have. Obviously, it's pretty much a no-brainer, but anyway, so the resolution's in here, when you do make the motion, because it's specific, it has to say that you are approving, and if you could just read the resolution itself to make sure it's specific, because we're not going to have any kind of public hearings on this, this is what we have. So you would need to make the motion to approve using the first paragraph in the resolution.
Okay. Are there any questions for the manager? Okay, moving on.
The second one, or the last one I have is, as Mr. Barry mentioned, the Housing Authority, they're coming forth for their second grant application. I thought Al might be here tonight, but certainly, he's going to be here during the public hearing, and he'll explain what their next phase is. You proved the phase prior to this, where they're doing the kitchens over at the Pleasant Street project, and in this particular case, I'm not sure whether, continuing with Pleasant Street, or moving on to one of the other three Housing Authority buildings. So he's looking for a motion at the end of your agenda to schedule a public hearing for 3:25 at 7 o'clock. Any questions on that? Mr. Chairman, we handled one of the executive session items in regular session, so we only have one executive session on the matter for...
Okay, thank you. And there should be no action outside of...
No.
...executive session tonight?
Correct.
Okay. So moving on to the town attorney's report, Attorney Futter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, on a topic I've been discussing, it seems several meetings in a row, we did receive notice today of a hearing on a second FOI complaint. This is the complaint that relates to council chats, which are informal meetings where council members make themselves available to the public. This complaint was filed by the Southington Observer that is set down for hearing on March 19, 2019 at 1:00 PM. As with the last case, there has been a mediator assigned to this case, which will be speaking to both sides in an effort to hopefully resolve the issue outside of hearing. So I'll be dealing with that for the next few weeks, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I do have a question on that, that March 19 at 1:00 PM. Do you as town attorney need to attend that meeting?
Yes. If it goes forward, yes, I will be present.
That's just, okay, it is what it is, but I'm sure, and also, are the people referenced in the complaint also have to attend?
Yeah, I'll be speaking to the council about that in the upcoming weeks, if there's a need to attend. Hopefully, ultimately, we don't want to go forward as we didn't with the last one. And I have spoken to the commission briefly on the matter, just whether their thoughts were that council members shouldn't be able to talk to the public in such an informal setting. So I believe we're in the right on this side, so I'm hoping that there is no need to attend, but if there is, we would obviously have to defend that position.
Any other questions for the town attorney?
I just wanted to ask, so wasn't this also included in the last FOI from the Observer about meeting with residents and meeting informally, that it, you know, wasn't that general?
Yeah, I guess you could kind of term it that way. It's meetings with the public by individual council members. And ultimately, my position on that was, that complaint was withdrawn without a hearing, so we never had a chance to present our case. So therefore, has there been an actual resolution by the commission? No. So here we are, going forward again on a separate set of facts, even though it's generally the same idea.
Thank you, Attorney Futter.
Any other comments, questions for the town attorney?
It seems like a really good set of facts. I mean, I wouldn't want to mediate it. I mean, let them make a decision, and then you don't have to worry about it. I don't see how they can, I don't know.
Go ahead.
I guess, you know, I'm lamenting, this is no one's problem but my own, but the fact that I work full-time, I don't get paid for my volunteer work on the town council, and so I guess I have to take a day off because it's at 1:00 in the afternoon, it's not like it's even first thing in the morning or last thing in the afternoon. Again, that's nobody's here problem, but, and Tom, to your point, so you're talking about the fact that we now have to pay to be represented there...
We'll both pay in for what you stated.
Right. So it is a concern, it gets more and more costly to do volunteer work in this community, I guess is what the, that's what I'm seeing lately, but...
Any other comments? Okay, moving on to public communication, so the microphone is now open to any resident that would like to speak. We'd ask residents to limit their comments to five minutes, if you could please, and as always, begin by stating your name and address for the record. Is that okay, Jack? Okay. Just come right up to the microphone, sir, and you can start by your name and address, and then anything you'd like to talk to us about.
My name is Bob White, 715 Berry Patchway. Just moved into town, that's why I hesitate on my address. I would like, please, to have everyone talk into the microphone. You know, these people over here saw me try to demonstrate, you know, talking into the microphone, and they got it, but over here, they didn't quite get it. Second of all, the lady that was here with the smoking, I took her outside and suggested something to her, but I want the rest of you to know about it. When my children were out of college, my wife and I went to Ireland. And in Ireland, on their cigarette machines, they have big letters across the cigarette machine, it says, "Smoking," I can't think of it, "smoking..." "Smoking causes deadly diseases." I said, "If she could put that on, you know, if a package is coming from a place online or wherever, you know, put it on the packages, let them see it." Might help, I don't know. Let them see it." Might help, I don't know. But they still smoke in Ireland.
Yes, we did.
Thank you very much.
Jack Perry, 153 Moorhill Drive. I first want to thank all the kids, part of the Southington Steps program, the youth council, for presenting that idea. It was a great event to go there, and, you know, they were very nervous when they pitched it, but it's nice to bring their ideas, you know, to light. Second issue, or not issue, but second thing I want to discuss is, I know I brought to other people's attention, I know I spoke to Dawn about it, about the roadway repairs. There's a company called Highway Rehab. I brought the literature out. Woolkit's used it for years. They're willing to do a presentation to the highway department. It seems like there's some resistance with some of the employees at the highway department, and it seems like they're still using the same contractor that they had issues with, the chip seal, and now this method. So, maybe it's time for a new contractor. Again, I think some people need to be held accountable for this, and I think the roads are horrible still. So, again, there's other methods, you know. Our neighboring town, Woolkit, does it, and the new method that they use is, it's like new asphalt, you know. It's a train of trucks go down the road, and it comes out like brand-new. So, I think that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to address Mr. Perry's comment about the contractor, the Public Works Committee did talk about the issue, and we are in the process of looking to other vendors. So, we anticipate there'll be other opportunities to engage other vendors in roadwork in the next season.
Mr. Fischel, I just want to remind you, you're welcome to speak, but please remember to limit your comments to five minutes, like all our residents.
Mr. Perry, I've been here almost four years, and you don't even know the date.
You're free to talk about whatever you'd like.
That's the way you keep the immigrant down the feet. Let's face it. And lock them up a little bit. President Trump, he said, "You gotta detain." I just... you know, something I go read the minute. I first think I want to do, if I may, because I got confused, you know, actually. It's not... the police said they check on what was going on.
Here, I'll pass them down for you.
Now, I didn't give a personal to Mr. Berry. He probably read that many that he's a special committee. I wrote that to you from Rome. I spent $100. You didn't even answer me back.
Oh, I did. I did answer you back, remember? This is going back almost 20 years ago.
Not just you.
Yeah.
You received it. It cost me $20 almost to receive. This is here, that's for you because he...
Not for me.
He thinks it's for you. You pass around.
Okay.
That's one of the police anger me off, said it's a good acting, but complimented you, Chief Berry. I mean, I know, he's a nicer man than me. I have a tape here. Now, you say it's confusion. This is no confusion. And you know so well because I met you long ago. I want to... this is here, you can pass around because this is where you steal the property.
Thank you.
Now, I have here this attorney, because some think that it makes me, well, this is law. Yeah, well, I suffer 57 years old. How do you communicate? On the face of the property behind you. Want to think you understand? The chairman is, "You people don't understand what I'm talking about." And you do this because this and this and that, but nobody ever called me to say, "What is going on here?" You know why? Because you use the local police and so on, the step to the immigrant, but you want the taxes. Now, that's for you, Mr. Rick, that you made such a statement, the lie. At least they could call me and say, "Listen, I really want to go on." Look at that. I know what's... you, in front of my son, I can hear a month ago, when my son, he told me, "Don't even bother doing anything." When you ask a question, I claim some kind of dumb. When I was 16, 17 years old, when I cleared the road, I spent $1,000 to clean. It was a mess. That fix your own town, your own property. How well you speak, you Johnny Berry, everybody around, you speak so well for yourself. Nobody ever speak for me. Now, back on the day that you say was confusion, I don't know who have to give this to. Why not give it to her? She know share other paper. It's a matter by the law when I for the property. It's confusion. It's a date. I want to get paid. I don't get her, but you spend a million dollars here. You can pass it to the son.
Thank you.
It's confusion. See the date, are you still in the property? Our teacher that showed, I tried to teach mine, but now all the time to listen, you know, like everybody else. Now, I come across the...
Okay, Mr. Fischel, thank you.
Mr. Fischel.
Mr. Fischel, your time is up. I give you five minutes, like any other resident.
You spend a million for buy the land. You still...
Mr. Fischel.
The police, you know, I have to...
Thank you.
Years ago, I was afraid. I said, "Jeez, we have done wrong."
Thank you, Mr. Fischel.
You are a thief. That's what you are. Thief, I want to keep the people safe. I want to get paid.
Mr. Fischel.
You pay me a figure, but you don't see me here anymore.
Thank you for...
Okay, my good. Thank you. Thank you. Good, thank you. Good, thank you. You are... you make a million for the board of education. How well you speak, come here, spend an hour to talk about...
Mr. Fischel, we need to move on with our meeting.
I need bread a long time ago. I was without bread. Okay? I live on the Holocaust without bread for a while, and no insurance.
Thank you, Mr. Fischel.
I want to get paid. No, thank you. I saw so many...
Is there any other resident that would like to come forward? Please come up to the microphone.
You know, this thing, it's ridiculous. If the police come next to me...
Mr. Fischel, you're out of order. You had five minutes, like any other resident did.
Pick your flag.
Thank you.
You know, lie, lie, lie. Once or twice, but lie. It's 40 years almost. You don't understand what I'm talking about. You should be... there's no... there's no pain.
Mr. Fischel, please move away from the microphone. We have another resident waiting to speak.
He came to me last time, but I don't understand. I do it too good.
Please, sit down. Please sit down, Yulia. Let the residents do. Please, thank you. I appreciate it.
Just calling me off and...
Just please sit down. Thank you.
So, as our next resident comes up, just for the public's sake, we have heard Mr. Fischel's case over nearly 20 years. We certainly have made every effort to try to accommodate Mr. Fischel. Council members, as well as our current town attorney and past town attorneys, have met with Mr. Fischel personally to try to resolve his issues. So, we all certainly are compassionate to that, and we have tried our best to resolve it.
Brian Gaylord, 900 South Main Street. Sorry to hear about your grandmother passing.
Thank you.
Everybody's up here talking about people that have been in this town for many, many years, and they want them to stay. I think one major point on having people stay in this town is trying to control the cost of the town budget, which I understand is extremely difficult for everybody here to do, to try to make everybody happy, the town residents, the town employees. We just had the Apple Harvest Committee said that two contractors kept their price the same. That's nice, but then we hear over here, the fire department with 6.8% raise. There is also a number called Zero Raise to maybe help out the town people or maybe not vote on anything until we're 100% sure, or maybe not 100% sure, but really have concrete numbers from the state on what they are giving the town of Southington before we have suddenly trying to scramble to find the money if the numbers are not true that they say. Mr. Lombardi over here was saying how much the cost is going to be next year. What's in three years? What's in four years? What other state contracts that we've been giving money to for many, many years, are they suddenly going to walk away from and saying, "Oh, it's not our problem. It's suddenly your problem"? I don't know if there's any... if we can wait on voting on anything, purchasing a $400,000 tanker, maybe we need it, maybe we don't. Can we delay it a couple of weeks or a couple of months till we find out where we are standing financially? Luckily, Southington is a town that does grow, but eventually, the growth is going to stop. The land is going to stop. If the taxes get too high, businesses aren't going to come into Southington. When we do a reevaluation next year, let's see where everything stands. Maybe people are going to suddenly find out that their house isn't worth what it's supposed to be. Then, they're going to come down here and say, "What happened to my property value?" What happened to your property value was it's... well, the taxes went up, so now Southington is not a desirable town to be in. And they're going to... and that's the person's, most people in this town, that's their largest personal investment that they have is their property. So, if they can't sell their property or get what they want when they retire, when they finally do decide to leave the town, it's going to be a huge burden, and this is something that creeps up every year. Everybody thinks it's only, it's under 3%, under 3%. Well, in 10 years, when you do the 3%, times 10 years, the 3% is compounded every year. So, it's not just 3%. Next year, it's 3% on the 3%. So, in 10 years, you're probably over 40%. So, are we willing to start having a budget, a Board of Ed budget of $140 million? And what happens if we don't get any money from the state? Where are we coming up with $140 million, just for the Board of Ed? That's going to put a huge financial burden on a lot of people in town, never mind the businesses. The businesses are the backbone of this town. We don't, they don't get anything. They don't get the schools. They don't get to come here and talk. I'm a business owner. Luckily, I live in town, so I can say something. I don't have to be in Southington. I could be a very mobile business. I could be out of town. So, as far as where you go, I can make a decision. Other people in town, they can't pick up their building and move it out of town and go someplace else. They're stuck here. They want to be here. It's a very nice location to be. There's family and friends. So, if we can delay voting on any expenditures, whether it be a union contract, a fire truck, a piece of paper, we should delay it as long as possible. I don't know what the legal, what the manager's budget has to actually be done. What contracts, can we delay it? I think we should delay it as much as we can. And I'm not saying not do the contracts, but let's see where we are going to be financially after the state figures out where they're going, because you may commit yourself to something that's going to really hurt the town people that we can't afford. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just one thing to clarify. We do allow local businesses, if they are a business in town, a local taxpayer, to come and speak. So, they can, if they'd like to. So, I just want to clarify that in case...
It's in the bottom where it talks about taxpayer also.
Yeah, it's on the agenda. It says, "Remarks of any qualified elector or taxpayer." So, just so people know, I don't want people to think they can't. So, they certainly are able to. Okay, is there any other member of the public that would like to come speak this evening? Okay, with that, I'll close public communications, and we're moving on to old business. First item under old business is action on the Board of Finance Minutes.
Move to accept, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, we have a motion to approve the Board of Finance Minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so that passes unanimously. Item B, action on fire department tanker project bid.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the bid as...
Okay, so the motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
I do have a question. I should have asked it earlier, but...
No problem.
We talked about the funding mechanism for this. It was out of the budget. Is this bonded, or is it cash funded?
This is one of the cash-funded ones.
Okay. So, and that was in the 1819?
The current budget.
Current budget. Okay, thank you.
We actually did another one from last year's budget, remember, also.
Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, congratulations. That passes. Moving on to item C, action on fire department contract. Looking for a motion?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the contract as presented to us.
All right, so we have a motion to approve as presented?
Yes, I would second that, Mr. Chairman, for this three-year contract of 6.8%.
Great. We have a motion to approve and a second, and is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I think we should clarify the 6.8%. It's 2018-19, which was retroactive to July 1st. That was 2.2. Upcoming year, 1920, is 2.4%, and 2020-21 is 2.2. So, you know, the headline shouldn't really read 6.8% because then the residents will assume that it's 6.8% in this year.
Right.
So...
That's why I said over...
Usually, when we deal with contracts, it's over the three-year period, but he's absolutely right. That's the...
Absolutely, and I appreciate you clarifying.
Yep.
Any other questions before we vote?
Yeah, I just have, to the town manager, can you clarify on page three where it says step movements? What does that mean? Is that, is there an additional percentage for step movement, or is the number that's presented is the final number?
There's, I believe, one or two steps, chief, in the firefighter division.
Entry-level firefighters have steps.
Yeah.
But once they reach top step, there's...
Right, so we're not changing the steps at all. It's the current part of the contract. But I believe there's two or three steps when you entry level, and then it goes to firefighter after they get all their certifications in place.
Are there any other questions?
I'm just curious. I don't know if this can be answered tonight or not. I probably should have inquired days ago. I'm curious about the EMT certification bonus. So, approximately, how many personnel do we have that go for that, so to speak, each year?
Chief, point your stuff up to the microphone.
And again, I apologize because I'm not sure that that's knowledge you'd have off the top of your head.
Every line firefighter, everybody who's assigned to shift work, anybody who is a member of the union, has to be an EMT. So, every career firefighter meets that standard. That's part of the basic national standards out there. So, and with 30% of our calls becoming EMS-related, it's an absolute necessity for us to have that.
So, that means that every single firefighter is receiving this bonus on an annual basis?
Yes.
What's it currently?
Currently, it is 1750, and it's going to 2,000. That's... so...
Thank you.
Mr. McCam?
There used to be, years ago, a provision in the contract that allowed for membership of the YMCA. Is that still in there? And that's for everybody?
Both career and volunteer.
And what is the cost of that?
It's to the single membership of the YMCA.
How much is that?
It's like $50 a month. Like $800 or $900 a year?
Yeah, I don't...
Oh, less than that. You're right. That's family.
So, we pay it even whether they use it or not?
No. They have to...
Chief, would you mind just coming up to the microphone? That way, there, for people at home, they can hear what you have to say.
And Mr. Baker. No, Mr. White. That was his name, Mr. White.
The way it works is they have to go to the gym, whether we will pay the YMCA or another gym in town, up to the cost of the YMCA figure, and they have to go, I believe it's 50 times in six months and 100 times within a year, and you can get half-year or... whole-year reimbursement. So you pay it, and then you have to, we reimburse it when you show proof that you've gone to use the facilities.
Okay, so if we're not paying, it's just carte blanche, so if people aren't exercising, we're not paying?
Absolutely not. So you have to show proof that you've gone.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Any other questions?
Well, since we're asking questions.
Sure, go ahead.
With regard to tuition reimbursement, do we have to see, is there a grade requirement, Mark?
We have two things. Number one is, it's got to be a program specifically set forth by the chief and the administration, and they approve of it, and is it a B grade? If I remember correctly, I think it's a B grade.
Okay.
It's not a C, which, which most of us got, it's the B or the As.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, as it's a contract, Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask you to call the roll, please.
Poulis?
Yes.
Ricchio?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Misselli?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Paul Mary?
Yes. Thank you. So moving on to item D, action on authorizing the issuance of the resolution, 7.5 million refunding bonds.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and if you remember, the manager said you have to read the exact language.
Could you just read the first paragraph, please?
Okay. I wouldn't have made the motion. Authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds for payment of all or a portion of the outstanding principal of an interest and any call premium on the town of Southington's 11,065, no, 11 million 65,000 general obligation refunding bonds issued of 2010, and 15,355,000 general obligation bonds issued of 2011, and costs related thereto.
Thank you.
I make the motion to include that language.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Poulis?
Yes.
Ricchio?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Misselli?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Paul Mary?
Yes. Thank you, that passes. Moving on to old business, item E, action on scheduling a public hearing for the tobacco vaping ordinance. I'd ask for, to schedule that for our next meeting at 7:00 PM.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so we have our public hearing, thank you very much. We appreciate you being here tonight. Moving on to item F, action on scheduling a public hearing for small cities grant.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we have a public hearing on March 25th at 7:00 PM.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes. And finally, new business, Councilman Dietzick, tax refunds.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax refunds as itemized in town council package.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
I do have a comment on that.
Sure.
For Councilman Barry. Is that, was that him in the tax refund list?
Wish it was, no.
Another John Barry?
Must be, it's a very popular name.
It was, it was like a $50 even, I just wanted to make sure Councilman Barry was, was aware that another John Barry is getting that refund.
Getting money back.
No, it's not me.
I'm friends with him on Facebook.
All right. Any other, any other comments?
That was the first comment on tax refund?
That's right.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously, great. We're moving on to executive session. Again, for the public's sake, we, we had on the agenda two contractual matters, we